My goodness, Linda.
Yeah, go ahead and hit on. All right, well, we're gonna get right at it and roll downhill. There you go, Shane. City Council work session agenda for the Monday, February 10th, for the February 18th meeting. First on the proposed-
10th meeting, you said 18th.
February 18th meeting.
Never mind, okay.
Yeah.
Don't pay any attention to me.
Okay, I won't. No, okay. First on the agenda will be a proclamation. We have two to present to southeastern community college. One for their 100th anniversary, congratulations, and also its career in technical education month. Both of them are in the packet if you want to look at them. Dr. Michael Ash will be here to accept. We also have a mayor's award for Mr. Scott Seasons regarding his heroism in the recent house fire. Number three is a public hearing for consideration of the sale of Lot 3 on Parkview subdivision Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland.
We've received a bid to purchase a lot here in Lot 3 of the Parkview subdivision. This was created about a year ago when we demoed the Parkview care facility and subdivided into three lots. We have had a listed suggested sale price of $30,000. The bid that we received was $25,000. That'd probably be, I guess, what staff would recommend for a minimum bid for that, but do feel that is acceptable based on comparable lot sales in the area. There are some restrictive covenants for this property. Each home has to include a two-car garage with concrete driveway, 1,250 square feet of living space. They have to start construction within 12 months of sale and complete within 24 months of sale. So, we just wanted to ensure that whoever purchases a lot out here is constructing something to get it back on the tax rolls and not just sitting on it. So, we would recommend approval based on that bid amount. Johnson Homes is the bidder on that lot. And Lot 3, again, is the easternmost lot in the subdivision.
Okay. Council, any questions?
No, if I could plug that, though, that's adjacent to Dankort Park, which has one of the best frisbee golf courses in the area, and that's free. Once you buy a frisbee, you're good to go. It's also close to a public pool and tennis courts. So, if anybody's listening in, those would be some awesome properties to build a home on.
I agree. Anybody else? All right, moving on. Number four, public hearing, consideration of the fiscal year 2020. 2021 maximum property tax dollars for the city of Burlington. Stephanie.
Put up there, that was published in the paper last week as required. This is a new requirement for the state of Iowa. That's a new part of our budget process. So, we're supposed to publish this and hold a public hearing on it, on these proposed tax levies. So, as you can see, it does show the tax levy. The levies that they are requiring us to show only total $12.06, which is not our total tax levy. It's more like $16. And again, you can see the tax rate is the same as it was the prior year. They're showing you the prior year FY '20 and then '21. And then, basically, what it is showing is since our valuation went up slightly, we are going to bring in more tax dollars based on the same amount of levy, and the increase is that 1.84%. And again, that's the increase in the valuation. So, then there's some explanations down there on why we have increases in the budget, which we've all talked about during the last six weeks. You know, pension expense has increased in salaries, in fire and police. We did add that evidence tech position went from part-time to full-time. So, those are the, you know, again, this is just looking at general fund, too. So, this sheet is also available on our website on the front page, and we also put it out on Facebook if anybody has any questions. But basically, next week is the public hearing. People can come and talk about it and see if they have any.
Basically, what we're looking at, there's no increase in our levy.
Right.
And what's the date and time of that public hearing?
It's in the city council meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, February, it's on there, though. If you pull it down at the top, it says, that's why it has to be published. It's 2/18, 5:30. It's during our regular meeting. And then, there'll be a resolution you'll approve after the public hearing, just approving this max property levy, so.
So, does anybody have any questions? Nope, seeing none. Thank you very much. I was remiss, too. I should say that Mr. Rinker called in. He could not be here tonight. He has a whole houseful of sick kids, so. Moving on to number five, resolution approving the final plat of the Wonderlick subdivision. Mr. Tisland, please.
This is a three-lot subdivision located in the county two-mile area off of Tamer Road, up near Edgewater Beach Road. Essentially, there's three homes here off Tamer Road or Tamer Road there that their property lines kind of are askew. They go through the buildings and don't quite line up. So, this plat will kind of correct those three property lines and make sure each home and their structures are all on their own lot. So, it's really more of a readjustment and replating for these three lots to have proper property lines.
Anybody have any questions?
Is that gonna affect anything for, like, other than redrawing it? What's it gonna affect?
Well, it'll make sure if they go to sell their house that they're selling the whole house or property. It's really more, it's driven by those property owners wanting to have their lines correct, so.
Okay, so, did they build over their property line or where?
I'm not sure. This is in the county, so we don't issue building permits in the county, whether they got a permit or-
Okay.
Had misinformation at the time. Some of those lines out there weren't real clear at the time of development, so this really cleans it up and creates new property lines and new corners.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Moving on to number six, resolution approving urban revitalization tax exemptions pursuant to Chapter 404 State Code of Iowa Tax Abatements.
Okay, so in your packet was a recap of the tax abatements that we have done since the program was started, and then Exhibit A, which is what you'll approve in the resolution, is all the new residential or residential renovation and anybody that's applied for the tax abatement in the last year. So, once a year, we take the applications throughout the year. They're due at the end of January so that we can get them filed to the county by the end of February. So, then, the following year, it's reflected on their taxes. So, we only come to you once a year for these approvals. You can see on Exhibit A, we had eight new residential. Prior year, we had 19. We had more renovations this year. We had 15 this year and four last year. And then, we only had one business commercial renovation this year compared to five last year. So, these are, you know, people, again, that have went online, filled out our tax abatement form. They've selected, you know, the option that they want, either it's a three-year or 10-year, on what kind of taxes they want abated, so. Does anyone have any questions or?
I don't. I think I went through it pretty good. Does anybody have any questions on that? No?
No, sir.
Do we just vote on those as a whole?
Yeah, it's a resolution with Exhibit A attached.
All right. Number seven is resolution approving the docking agreement with the American Queen Steamboat Company.
Jim, I think, put a fairly good memo into the packet for you to read. I guess I'll discuss the American Queen and the Viking docking agreements kind of together. Chelsea is here. Did you have anything to say on that?
Did you see the new agreement that just came in?
I was out of the office for some of the afternoon.
Chelsea LaRue, Executive Director, Greater Burlington Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Welcome.
And literally, just as I walked out the door, American Queen sent over a new proposed agreement. I talked to them this afternoon, and they are willing to propose a dollar per passenger that they pay to the city per three vessels, starting as early as 2020 dates. And they also want to, they're proposing that in exchange for priority docking. They just want to make sure they're not excluded out of one of the two mooring locations that we do plan to have. And they're also wanting, similar to how we have in the Viking agreement, a five-year agreement with the option for that to renew. So, the agreement that they sent over just before I walked out the door, language very similar in the two agreements so that we can get them to speak the same language that way.
Okay. And the reason that they wanted to make sure a third company didn't come in and take priority?
Correct.
But they don't have two boats in the area. Neither company would have two boats in the area at the same time or we would have an issue.
It is a possibility. So, starting this summer, American Queen is actually sending two boats on the same day. We think we can accommodate that with using kind of the visitor dock area. I've spoken with Braden. So, we just have to make sure that American Queen wouldn't send two of their own boats at the same time.
Okay. Anything else?
So, beyond the, both agreements are trying to reflect each other in their language. You will note in the Viking one, they are talking about proposing an extra $50,000 in compensation to add an additional mooring site. Currently, we have mooring and, I guess, docking infrastructure for the area nearest the port, trying to push some of that section further south. That will mean the open areas in the flood wall would have to have the fence changed to a gate, and then, there would have to be some sort of ability to more sizable boat up against it. And so, since the flood wall is already completed, we can't add those cleats that we have in the current wall. Those are poured into the wall, and they have some tiebacks. So, we'd have to actually put some infrastructure into the river. And so, we have $50,000 that they're discussing in that agreement. We don't know what cost would be to install that.
Okay.
But, you know, this is assuming that we don't get any boating infrastructure grant and putting the docks out front. If we have those type of docks, we will be able to accommodate them with no added work.
Okay.
So, I know that there's still, Jim, before he left, hadn't read this agreement, I'm sure. And so, I know that this was an item that we wanted to try and get through. But if there was any questions on stuff, he was, you know, gonna pull it from the agenda to make sure that the language is correct for both parties, so.
Do you have a question, Linda?
I'm just curious, how many passengers are we expecting?
The American Queen is like a 450-passenger vessel.
Wow.
American Duchess is about 160. And then, the new boat that they're launching this summer is the American Countess, and it's about 250.
As I remember it, their schedules don't often collide.
Not right now, but we don't know if the future will hold.
And that's the reason why that agreement for the five years out is discussing that priority docking.
All right.
I like the 460 numbers. Cha-ching, cha-ching.
Anybody else have any questions? So, Chelsea, or Nick? All right, thank you very much for coming down. Okay, we'll move on to the proposed consent agenda. Number one is resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Anything special there, Eric? Okay. Number two is a resolution approving a refund of liquor license for Burlington Lodge. Number 84, doing business as the Burlington Elks Lodge, number 84.
I believe this is a reimbursement for the liquor license that they had during Regbri. Yes, correct.
Yes, okay.
I thought I was right, but I didn't want to.
Number three, resolution approving the amendment for, oh, sorry, do you have any questions on that? Okay. Number three is resolution approving amendment number one to the agreement between the Flood Mitigation Board and the city of Burlington.
So, this agreement is in conjunction with the Flood Mitigation Board funding the $26.2 million awarded from the state in sales tax increment. Because the increment has not been there, and we have rearranged the projects based on need, that is the reason for the amendment. I haven't had the chance to read through the full amendment, but I think if you have any further questions, Jim probably would be able to answer that. He's handled most of this work.
Is it just changing the pay schedule?
Yeah, it's changing the schedule, yeah.
Yep.
That's what they were looking at.
Just extends it two years.
Right. Questions, anyone? No? Okay, we'll move on. Let's see, that was number three. Number four is resolution approving the expanded scope of work from the 2019 HMA resurfacing project. Nick?
So, in July of 2019, we let an asphalt project in the area of North Hill. I have a map that might be able to tell you kind of the description of what we're talking about. We awarded contract to W.L. Miller in the amount of $731,905. When we were doing the five-year road plan, we knew that these roadways were something that we wanted to take a look at. We opened a conversation with W.O. Miller to see if they would honor the same pricing that they bid in the 2019 project. This essentially would be, in the contract terms, would be an adjustment on the quantities, essentially, an asphalt and removal bid items that we already have. And so, this additional cost is estimated at $443,448.17. So, they will bring the total contract up at the end of it to 1.1 million. And it will tackle the grade areas, are the areas that are currently under contract. The green shaded roadways will be the ones that will be added to the 2020 project, of which we discussed in the five-year road plan. We're still meeting requirements for bidding law because we're following the same price structure that we did when we bid it out in July. We save mobilization, and the biggest thing is time. So, I think it makes a lot of sense to go this way.
Well, those roads certainly needed. Anybody have any questions for Nick on it?
Yeah, I don't understand road lingo talk. What do you mean by saves mobilization? What does that mean?
So, when you bid out a project, you put a unit price in there for mobilization, meaning the contractor has to acquire all the supplies, equipment, and staffing to come on-site and begin work. And so, contractors will bid that different ways sometimes. They'll, you know, they'll put $20,000 for mobilization, whether or not, a lot of them will put it into bid items as well. But generally, it's to get contractors ready to do the work.
Okay. Thanks, Nick.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Moving on to number five, resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with Piper Sandler and Company to serve as the dissemination agent for the secondary market disclosure.
Yes, please. I'd appreciate that.
We should just have you sit down here today.
So, Piper, they're called Piper Sandler now? That's Piper Jaffray. So, this is Travis's agreement for us to do the bonding. That you'll see their set dates are coming up for our 2020 geo-obligation. So, this is an agreement we have to approve each time we go to bond with them, so, and use their services. Just a different name.
Okay. Any questions, guys? No? All right, and then, six, we're gonna, will be set dates for the following public hearings. March 2nd, 2020. Number one is consideration of sale of property locally known as 822 Linden, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Do you want to say anything about that at this time? Okay. B would be consideration for the 2020 obligation corporate purpose and refunding loan agreements in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $16,000.
That's a little more than $16,000.
Or $16 million, thank you. The print was, Lumiere's eyes are tired. Number seven is a public hearing.
I'm gonna write that down.
You should. Number seven is public hearings. Well, it gets really small here, I'm just saying. Number seven is, I got readers on, thanks. Public hearings previously scheduled by city council is consideration of plans and specifications for the 2020 Dankort Park Tennis Courts Repair Project. That's for March 2nd. Also, a consideration for 2020 amendment to the urban renewal plan for the Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area related to use of incremental property tax revenues. That's for March 2nd. March 2nd's gonna be busy, kids. And number three, which would be under C, consideration of development agreement with Merge LLC, including annual appropriation tax increment payments in an amount not to exceed $2 million, March 2nd, 2020. Next up is discussion items. First up is flood and tiger. Mr. Foley. Welcome back, sir. How do you do?
Thank you. Leo Foley, Veenstrom Kim. Do you have a, do you have a? All right, so what the intent today is to give you a update on kind of where we're at as far as the tiger grant and the riverfront, as well as a little bit on the flood protection. Lot of things going on, I guess, in the same time period. So, riverfront update, need to talk about the hotel and the master plan. As you can see to the right, the riverfront master plan, that's the one that was agreed to a couple of years ago. And then, options for the splash pad have been discussed, options for the band shell or the area behind the auditorium is what that should be. And then, NEPA status, the south parking lot, schedule, cost, and then, interface with flood mitigation. So, I've got a lot of issues. I'll just start going through. If you have questions, just fire away. Okay, so the first thing is, we kind of were put on hold in the area between the auditorium and the port building and the big blue box here because of the potential hotel site, potential garage over here. So, we've kind of started doing some work on those areas, but I would say in a limited manner. But we need to move quickly if we want to catch up. So, this is kind of what the area looks like today, the existing condition. It's a very good photo because it shows exactly what's going on with the parking and all that type of thing going on now. Okay, so this is the current layout that our plans show. So, we've worked with the people that were talking about doing something with the parking garage in the auditorium, and they kind of, we started to put like a little band shell here so they could have little gatherings and concerts here. We thought that was, kind of fits into the master plan. We also looked at moving the splash pad to here. And then, this is all the same, and this is a green area. We hadn't really figured anything out over here yet. So, that's kind of the way the plan went into the Iowa DOT for preliminary plans. That's what they saw. You can see also, they saw down here, the dock. You can see there was a, kind of an ice break out here. Doesn't go down further, but it also shows the things we did in the south parking lot. This is just currently how the circulation was intended to work. Traveling back and forth here, parking up in this area, green space here, kind of a bollarded off area that would work during events as kind of a drop-off zone. Parking would be here, up here, and over here, not in this area. This, again, looking at traffic here, how traffic would go back and forth in this direction. So, that was kind of the guiding forces. Again, showing you a little bit more pictorial, that's how it would look if we did it exactly how the master plan showed. Kind of a lawn area, a splash pad up here. Lot of people didn't like that. The hotel people, for instance, did not like that splash pad. They wanted it moved here. Even, I think, city staff, there were people that thought it would look good here because of the coming down there. So, there were options floating around. We didn't fall into any of them too much. We just kind of moved forward and tried to stay away. So, this is the one that I would say had a lot of people, when the hotel was being planned, to put that splash pad here. This could be a hotel or could be a lawn and leave that as some other plaza. That's a option to move forward with. A second option, and this is one that seems to be liked by the, more the architect types, is to move the splash pad over here, keep it closer to the shade structures. So, we put this as recommended option, meaning recommended by the architect design team. Nobody else has recommended that as an option. I'm just giving you, that's the direction. If they had their druthers, they think is the smartest way to go forward. They think that that gives you the area here, and it kind of makes, fits into the genuine use of the area. And again, trying to not have your parking in what they consider the most valuable area. This is just basically adding some parking, again, because we got discussion that, hey, the more parking you can add, even though you're gonna have parking along these things, if you can add some here, it would help. We do know we were still gonna have ADA access over here. So, that was another option that we thought was a pretty good option and maybe something you wanted to look at. These shade structures, I asked because we showed them on the master plan here. They were, the reason they liked moving the splash pad into this area was because of those shade structures are closer by in that picture. And if you go back, you couldn't really put them up in here because of the way the use is during steamboat days with the bands. So, those are some options that we were thinking about. This gives you some costs of what these shade structures are gonna look like. And gets you to another issue. The other issue was this awning here. This awning here is an awning that they use as a drop-off. And as you saw in the other, we were gonna make this two-way traffic, so widen that out when we did that. They were talking about cutting this awning back so that it's, right now, it's a 10-foot in the trucks and things like that. Cut it back or potentially put a new awning on and try to get it higher, which would be expensive. Our costs right now don't show higher. They show us more or less modifying it to fit the existing. And I'll get to the cost estimate because that's coming. Okay, another area in question. So, this is getting into the south parking lot. We were gonna redo this boat ramp. We were gonna make it a better boat ramp. This is a double boat ramp. We were gonna try to put a big block here to try to block the flow, to slow the flow down, and make this a much better ramp than what it has before. And we were gonna redo this entire parking lot to maximize parking for boats, as well as for any events that happen in the future. What we did find out is that this property right here is owned by BNSF. They lease it to, I forget the name, but the people that own the-
Elevator.
The elevators at that point. They are not real excited about selling the property. They are excited about maybe changing their lease and giving us a lease, but to use federal property, you'd need a long-term lease. They have not said no, but they're not moving real fast either. So, that might be an area we have to maybe not do so much work and keep our work down in this area. I don't think that's a huge problem.
All they're really using is the road at this point in time. I don't think they use that parking brake.
They don't use that parking at all, and right now, you have bumpers up here, and you can see this behind. There's cars parked there, and I think the city operates and maintains it.
Okay.
But to use federal funding, you have to have that in writing. And right now, you just have a gentleman's agreement.
You have to have a rail, you have to have an agreement with the railroad.
Well, we've been lucky with them so lately.
And we're working on it. We are working on it, but they're not working real fast on it. They definitely are interested. So, schedule, and this schedule's really important. This is the design period that we're in right now. What the feds are telling us is when we get to here, this September timeframe, they'd like us to obligate all the money for the entire project. Our plans have always been to obligate money for parts of the project here and then wait and do the second part here. We thought there were really good reasons to do it. Not as much, I mean, this is over $20 million worth of construction. We thought if we could break up Maine and Jefferson, that would be good. And on the park, if we did the south and then the north, it would be good. But it also helps us line up, like if we get the big grant. It's not gonna line up this year. It might line up next year. So, I've been pushing really hard with the state DOT who indicated to me today, yes, we've seen your schedule, we agree with your schedule, and we think we can make it happen. But I will tell you, I talked to the federal people, and they're not liking it as much. Just so you know, too, I did give them electronic of this thing. Okay, so that's, right now, this is the schedule they've seen. We're not backing off this schedule. We're standing as tough as we can, saying we want to go with this schedule. But if they say you have to make all of these contracts start right here, it causes us huge problems with maximizing other grants, which I'll show you in a minute. And it also means you have to have your NEPA 100% complete here. For the riverfront, for the dockage especially, and the boat ramp, they've said they'd like us to do one more muscle study. You have about four that have been done in the past. They'd like one more. We tried to do it in the fall. You had a pretty big fall flood, a historic fall flood. Then, winter came in fairly early in November. We could not get it done. We will do it in the spring. I will tell you, the Iowa DOT is being very helpful. Their environmental people are saying, hey, we've run into this a lot. And the chances, you've got three muscle studies in the past that have never found any muscles or any endangered muscles. We don't expect to find them. So, if you- find them. So if you find them, we'll relocate them. And that's what we want to say to them. So let us go forward. Don't hold us up. And you'll see here in a minute how they hold us up.
I just got a text from, from Matt. He was wondering, question on the previous slide there, Leo. If we did work out something with the railroad, um, what part would we have to buy? And I guess the area in question would be, I, I know that they would want to retain the road, I would guess, and we would possibly split that and take the parking.
What we were saying, what we were saying is you would take the parking, but we could redo the road. So this part of the road could all be redone. They own even up into here.
Yeah.
So what, what I was thinking, what I told the, the thing is, the grant application, we could redo all of this and then the city would still allow this road, of course.
Okay.
So it could be a win-win.
Yeah, I think.
And the railroad seemed to like that idea, but again, trying to get them to move fast.
Yeah.
So, so by se- And it would be, and it would be a lease type, a easement type situation, not from, not a purchase, where it would be the right outright owners of the property.
September of 2020, we have to have that done. And, and she told me three months is what she was thinking. So I'm sitting here thinking, well, we, we might be able to get that, that worked out.
All right.
So we're moving forward. I just want everybody to see, that's the area.
Thanks for backing up.
Okay, now, let's go to the cost estimate and my eyes, I've gotta go.
You want John's readers?
What's that?
You want his reader glasses and binoculars to that?
I should, I should. So, let me summarize a little bit on the cost estimating. Okay, so this, basically, we got it down into riverfront, Main Street, Jefferson Street, and all the different little items underneath. All of these costs come down to about 22,000,134,000. Then over here, we said, okay, where are we getting the money from? Let's make sure everything's kinda adding up. So, on that, on the riverfront, Tiger Funding's gonna provide you, and that's, sorry about these numbers, 5.3 million. Big Funding, if we're able to get it, is 1.5 million. Great Place is 300,000. City Addition to Great Places is 100, and then 700 for the city to add. And that's in your budget that Jim has, has talked about. What Jim's concerned about, and, and I understand, is this 1.5 million, if we don't get that and we have it in our plans and we have to go bid in September, what happens if you don't get it? So that's, I've got, I've got some areas to show you on that. That, that's, that's a big issue. The Main Street and Jefferson Street, it's about 7.5 million and 6.7 million. Totals down here to about 22.1. I total my numbers here and I come up with 21.9. And those kinda numbers with the type of contingencies we have, that's pretty close to being balanced and we think we can work within this area. If we got the grant, everything would probably balance out. We don't see a big problem. So the big grant is the biggest question. So I want to just keep that in mind as we move forward.
Could you go back to that? Um, I think we've talked about it before, but the, there's a section under Main Street where we have city funding listed, 3.3 million dollars. Uh, that is tax increment finance funds to pay for additional sewer work that, not associated with the Tiger Grant, but we feel is necessary and prudent to do while the roadway is excavated. Uh, we have some sewer separation in the area that needs to be done and that's about 1.3 million dollars worth of work. And then we've estimated about $2 million to, uh, bring a replacement or similar sized, uh, forced main for the Market Street lift station. Uh, something that was called out in our sewer master plan was work on the sewer, on the Market, uh, Street Force Main. Uh, so we still have some details to work out on that stuff, uh, but it's something that we think is, makes sense to do while we have the roadway opened up. And so that's why he's got that money in there, showing the two, two.
Worst-case scenario in our position is for us to get done with Main Street and have a beautiful Main Street and then Don's Force Main goes bad and we have to dig up two.
I do, I do like how you gave possession to Don.
I said it on purpose, I, but, but, but really, a force main's a tough item too. It's really tough to repair. You can't just drain it and repair it. If you put this under, I think the benefits are huge. So we, we think that's a really smart move.
I would also like to point out that the flood mitigation board that helped us out with the flood wall, uh, our portion of the match was, uh, sewer work, whether it was pre-existing, current, or future sewer work. So that's part of how we also got that flood wall, uh, granted to us.
And, and lastly, for our, um, integrated management work, this is exactly what they want to see. So this is doing everything that the regulators want you to do and it's really good for you to do. So this is a, this is a great, it's, it's an expensive idea, but it, but it's probably something that's, that's really easy to, to understand. Okay, I just wanted you to see here, these are the plans as they've gone in. So the plans right now are gone in as one set of plans, and this is for Jefferson Street and Main Street with a Phase One and a Phase Two. And that's how we'd like to do that. Then, we did another set of plans and it shows, this is the riverfront and it basically has two phases in that too, a north and a south phase. So this is how the DOT has seen these plans. They're at their office. They have not, I just talked to them today. They have not started reviewing them, but the plan sets are there. The city has these plan sets. They're in what I would call a 30 to 50% phase and we're working really hard to move them to the next set, which is due March 10th, which is called check plans. Okay, so this one, um, this is just, trying to remember where we were going here. I, I just wanted you to see, oh, this comes right out of the plan set and shows you what we have right now. So right now, this is where that, um, it doesn't look very right, but this is where the splash pad is. This is kind of the little event center behind the auditorium. And right now, this is green space as far as the plans are shown. So the set of plans that the DOT is looking for shows that. So we can change, but we need to do it very quickly. Okay, so this is the, again, what was in the master plan and was part of the big grant application. There's a big grant tier two, which is the money more or less given to you to do more study so you can go forward and ask for the 1.5 million. That's due, coming up next Thursday. We've been trying to get that for a solid year. Every month, I've been sending them letters, notes, why don't we have it? Because the city had the grant application, the grant agreement a year ago, but the, the state had a lot of turnover, attorneys that had never seen these applications, now they're into it. And it goes to the commission on Thursday. I heard there shouldn't be any problem with that. But what that's gonna do is allow you to put that package together for a 1.5 million dollar grant. Doesn't say you're gonna get the 1.5 million. You've got to compete. We have been very successful. We were successful in Clinton. We were successful in Dubuque doing the same thing. So we feel good about it, but I can't sit here and say, you're gonna get a win. They tell me the Mississippi River, the, the two coasts always get money out of that program and they like to find a project on the Mississippi River. So we usually feel like we're gonna get it. Timing is always important. Well, part of that project also was a restroom facility. And you, if, no matter where you do this, um, well, whatever we do, if, for the transient boat, if you do this docking, you probably need a wet restroom facility with showers and things like that, and they will pay for that. Like Jim's told me, if he doesn't get that agreement, he's certainly not gonna do that restroom.
Yeah. I, I do have a little bit of, of a concern with that. If, if the goal is to provide power and water for the transient boats, I don't, I, I don't know of a boater that's gonna spend the night there.
I don't-
Because of the current and it's narrow and the barges.
I don't think you have to do power and water for all of them.
Okay.
But you probably have a couple that you'd want to put power and water to, but not to all of them.
Yeah.
So that is something that, and that's where we're not very far along on our design. That question has come up. How many do we, would you need power and water? Um, let's go to the next one. So this just shows you what that restroom would look like, a restroom facility that would be attached to the port facility. This part of the port, there's already a, um, some utilities and things like that. So we'd make this a utility room. We could protect the foundation, which is another little, little ancillary benefit. Okay, so this is where I wanted to get to as far as issues, coordination. Two contracts, two-year construction. We, in my mind, to make this thing work right, we have to get that. And I'm getting all positive results from our Iowa DOT. This NEPA, you cannot, we, I told you that we have to send in check plans by, um, March 10th. In order to, for them to review check, check plans, we have to have NEPA clearance.
And for clarification, NEPA is the environmental cultural study that you have to do to make sure that federal monies don't impact muscles or, or some sort of cultural thing.
Right.
So just as clarification.
So when you go down to environmental clearance, riverfront questions, categorical exclusion has been, that's a huge thing. The, the state and the feds have gotten together and said, we both recommend a, a categorical exclusion. That's good. We've, they, they're, they've looked at our muscle studies so far. They've looked at our cultural studies. They say, we think it's gonna be an exclusion. However, Fish and Wildlife would like another muscle study before spring, um, before signing off. Cannot be completed until April. The water has to be 40 degrees before they'll do, they'll, they'll accept the muscle study. So they're thinking that's in the late March, early April timeframe. Well, we have to have plans in by March 10th. If we can't do the muscle study, it's a catch 22. It's a catch 22 and we don't want that. So, so what we've said is if, if we agree to move the muscles, they may sign off earlier. And the DOT says they do it all the time, the state DOT. So whether they're gonna give it to us, we haven't got it yet. I will tell you this, the Iowa DOT, again, they have a lady that's in charge of their threatened and endangered species. She's been working very good with us. She thinks this is, you know, this is a, this is gonna be a win and she just needs to get it coordinated. And, and they do that coordination. I already told you about, okay, let's go to design review. Check plans can be, cannot be reviewed without NEPA. Now, what they told me today is maybe they could give us NEPA on the roadways, because the roadways are crystal clear. There's no issues on those two roads. So if they could give us review on those and let us just have a little more time on the riverfront, I think everything's gonna work just perfect. So that's why we, we're still going for this March 10th. There's nobody stopping March 10th for our check plans. And all plans must be approved with NEPA clearance and the railroad by September 2020. That makes sense to me because they're not gonna want to say your money's available unless all that's done. But that's not till September and we got a lot of time to work on that and we'll get, I'm positive we'll get there. Railroad agreement with the south parking lot, same thing. That's the September date date. I think we'll get there. My recommend is we design it, we leave it in there and if something happens and you absolutely can't get in there, we'll take it away at the last second. Last one on this, dock and restroom decision. I was almost to the point of telling you to pull your dock out because it was such a problem and I didn't see the thing, but now where I'm getting, where they're gonna let us split this up, I'd say keep it in. City will not know about the dock funding for tier one for about a year because it's due in October. So you're not gonna get an application even re-looked at until October. But then we have another year, recommend leaving the plans in separate item. And so we could do this where the docks are all completely a separate item. And if something happens, then we take it out. I don't know, because our grant application showed those docks for Tiger, if we, I don't know if we could take them all out. We'd probably still have to put some kinda docks in, but I'm sure we could cut back and, and make it a little more, um, fundable. But what you saw in those pictures is like a $3 million dock. That's not what we'd do if we, if we cut it back. So my, my recommendation is keep it in there, keep it as a separate item, move forward with the tier one grant and complete the detailed design, the muscle study, bathymetric survey, and the restroom design. So have it all in a package, ready to go, but it's in separate items. So then we could take it out and negotiate if we have to. All right, so splash pad location and awning decision is critical. So we've kinda, to move forward, we've gotta know what you want to do with that splash pad. And, and really, the awning's a smaller decision, but the splash pad's huge. And, and that splash pad has to do with parking and all of that. So I, I will go back to that, but I wanted to go forward a little bit on this flood protection before I go back to that. This is just a schematic that shows the plans as they speak right now. They're in about the same stage as your Tiger Grant. They're about, oh, I'd say halfway, three-quarters complete. Uh, we had a meeting again with the wastewater director and found out we need to make some changes up in here to facilitate better operations of the Market Street being, but I don't think any of that is insurmountable. We're also looking at that force main coming through and how does it come through the wall? Where does it come through the wall and how does it get into the, to the lift station? And then how does it operate with the existing one? So we've got some work to do to make all that work out, this end right here. This end over here, what we understand is that the, um, railroad, the, the short line is gonna raise their track another foot. Uh, Nick wants us to raise this parking lot another foot so during flood protection, you don't have to put anything in for a while. So we're, we're in that process of getting it all graded outright. Things are going fairly well. Things are all working the way we wanted them to work. So what are our coordination issues with this one? Removal of one track from the north part of the park is assumed happening. From my meetings with the railroad, from my meetings with Jim and Nick, this seems to be something that's gonna happen, but I need to make sure it happens because that's what our plans are gonna show. This allows for a one-track closure versus two tracks. That saves you about 100 grand at least. One-track crossing investment at Jefferson, the, the track crossing, not, not the track closure, but the track crossing is another 50,000 per track. So you've got two more. So there's another, there's a couple of hundred thousand dollar savings right there when that happens. City and the railroad will need some kind of agreement. The running track has to be raised a foot. We talked about that. That's already done. Track closures will be stop log instead of swing gates. And the railroad agreed to that and that's gonna save you probably 200 to 300,000 dollars. That's not all worked into the schedule yet because our structuralists aren't done. Structural engineers have a way of adding cost to things, um, because we, even though there, it won't be the same kind of a foundation that you have under the rest of the wall. It will be different. And they also want to have a temporary passing track at each one of these locations. The railroad says they did it on-
During the, during the storm sewer.
Was that-
Issue at the Hawkeye.
On the Hawkeye.
Yeah.
So they've just done this and they said they could do it again. Uh, they threw out numbers that were in the 50,000 dollar range, which again, when you can save 200 to 300,000 dollars, it seemed like reasonable. They wanted to do that work themselves. VNK recommends paying the short line to provide that temporary passing tracks. We think it makes the whole project go way better. Um, the railroad stop log openings must be at least 18 foot. We just got that recently. We had them 15 feet, but again, it's a small problem. Um, railroad safety, talked to them and railroad safety told me, as long as short line's pleased with the opening, we're pleased. But there is a cool problem with, um, sight distance that we have to work on, that we don't want to have to have electronic sight distance things during construction. So we're working that out. Current cost estimate for this phase, I have not changed it. This 3.7 million is what's in all of our documents for construction and it says construction will start in the summer. We don't see that number going up at all. We might see it even dropping. I have not added some of these savings in there yet. And when we first came up with these numbers, as you know, they're pretty rough. Now that we're getting plans, we'll, we'll nail them down, but I don't see anything raising us up. So, I wanted to go back before I leave here and I almost need an answer as quick as we can get it on what are we gonna do in, in this area here? Um, we had a ton of pushback during our planning study. You weren't here, I don't think, but, or were you? Early on.
During the master plan.
During the master plan.
I was not.
But early on in the master planning, we had a lot of debate about this. They had a, they had a, um, parking study that was completed, but there's still was some pushback. But, um, Matt and others that were on that thing approved going forward with basically- But, um, Matt and others that were on that thing approved going forward with basically this plan. Now, even afterwards, there were people that questioned this. There's a pump room right in here. It made sense to move this closer over here. Uh, from here, you can look down here, get, I don't know if there's other reasons, but um, we don't know how to make that decision to move forward. Right now, that's the plan we have, which shows the, 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 um, splash plat, pad in this area. And this is kinda how the circulation would work. Um, I guess.
So, so again with your little, where the splash pad is now?
Right here.
I liked it by the shade structure personally. That made sense to me, because parents are gonna wanna watch the kids.
The next one, I think.
So you liked it in this area?
I do.
I actually thought they could move this shade structure up a little too. Made sense to me. But ju, just, in gen, whoops. In general, that layout.
Do you, do you remember, Leo, at one point in time, we, we discussed what the parking numbers were gonna be? Because it, it, am I correct in remembering, we're gonna add additional stalls along the west side?
You're, you're adding stalls all along here. You're redoing this, this parking lot and redoing this parking lot. I don't remember the exact numbers, but I think you were losing like fifteen spaces or twenty spaces.
Okay.
Uh, total.
Well, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm not a big fan of the splash pad, but I, I like it closer to the riverfront.
Okay.
That would be my preference. Like in that other drawing, sorry, Linda.
So is this option right here, if we move that shade structure, is that something we could, we could start pushing it forward? I mean, I'm, we can make some changes, but I just wanted to, or, or what are the next steps to try to get that hammered out?
Let me ask you about, so you said there was a pump room in the auditorium.
There is, right, right there.
It would be more helpful to have the pad down there. How would it work for where you have it?
We could still get it there. We'd just pipe. We'll, we'll, this is all gonna be torn up anyway. We'd pipe through it.
It's water too.
What's that?
It's water, so they don't have to.
It is water and
Elevation.
Water, and then we've got sanitary sewers that we're gonna be using anyway.
The other thing is, we've given that developer a, a year. Discuss what he wants to do, and if he puts the doggone hotel in there, if we agree to do that, which, who knows? That's gonna necess, necessitate the, the move in that splash pad.
Yes.
And it would be okay.
If that's the case, then I would put it down by the riverfront.
That splash pad would stay if the hotel was
Back there. If, if, if it, if it is here, then the hotel fits in here, and he was okay with that. That's, that's the problem.
What's the purpose of a splash pad?
A splash pad, it, it's surprising. I, I feel exactly like you do. You've got a river there, but the, the whole intent is to make this a common area where lots of people come, and people come with their kids, and it's somewhere for the kids to play. It's a, it, I, I will tell you, I've seen them, I've seen them in Bettendorf, and I've got one in Rock Island, and they get used a ton in the summer.
They can be as simple as essentially a little fa, individual fountains
Right.
in concrete with proper drainage that, you know, can blast out. There's more recreational type splash pads too, where they have, um, things that topple over and shoot water out. I don't think that that's what this splash pad would look like.
This one is one so the kids could run through, and it, it would have twenty or so spickets in there, and they would go off and on with different colors and that type of thing. So even if you were, even if you were watching a, some kind of a little concert here, the kids could play here. And that's the, that's kind of the intent.
And how much does it cost?
Yeah. Right now, that spray pad is at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So part of the funding for that is the Great Places
Grant.
Uh, grant funds, but then also part of Tiger, correct?
That is correct.
And something the new council people might wanna be aware of is we, we polled the city, and we said of all of these features, what would you like to see? And the splash pad, I was shocked. Far and above Roosevelt, everything else is something people wanted.
I just got done doing the exact same thing we did with you in Leclerc, Iowa. And Splashpad came out as one of their, if not highest, the, very close to the highest priority, again. And again, I can't understand it, but I might not be the youngest guy in the room.
Me and my wife, uh, we had this discussion quite a few times, because I didn't see, um, long-term the cost of maintaining it. It, it didn't make sense to me, and she's like, no, you don't understand. They're awesome, blah, blah, blah. They built one in Stronghurst, and her and her friends take all their kids over to Stronghurst, Illinois to play on their splash pad, and she said it's always packed all summer long. Um, so again.
The intent is to get people to the riverfront, and they say this is a big draw.
For some reason, water features attract kids and grandparents, and they just love it.
So do we have any idea of like the maintenance costs on it, like?
It's, it's been asked a couple of times. Um, there are two different types. There is the recirculating, where you essentially, you have filter systems. Uh, it requires a certain grade operating, which, I don't know, that I think that we'd have to probably use
It's almost like a swi, it's a swimming pool.
Uh, essentially. And then there is the la, pump and dump. So you, essentially, you pump the water and then you dump it straight into the sewer system. It's not necessarily the most environmentally friendly, but it's, the maintenance is a lot cheaper.
We did a lot of cost estimating on, on this one here. And, and the problem with it is, you, you need to have a control system, and they're making them, because everybody and their brother's building these things, the control systems now, so so the, the water comes on and off a lot more, and really what you're doing is saving water. You're saving water all the time with this thing.
So I'd also bring up that we've discussed the swimming pool and, and long-term on that, and that eventually it'll need a new liner. Is that right, Eric?
No, it'll need completely replaced.
Yeah, and how many years?
The liner was a ten-year liner, or fifteen-year liner five years ago, so.
So that's something we need to consider too, that, you know, um, we don't know where, where heading with the public pool. Um, this is a, an option where we'll have public use, and it's, you know, so it's just something to think about.
I, I think the, the annual maintenance on a feature like this is probably in the twenty-five to fifty thousand bracket. Uh, to give you context, the fountain that was out there that was removed with the flood wall project costs us anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five thousand a year, um, annually, so.
One thing, yeah.
Just to give you an idea what, what the cost is.
I, you know, the, the thing is, it was one of the number, it was the top, as Matt reminded me, he just sent me a text. He was a top, uh, vote getter or recipient of, of, uh, votes as far as the amenity. The biggest thing you're asking us, Leo, is where do we want it, correct? Matt would like it to remain back up in front of the stage.
Matt would like it here?
Yeah, that's what he said.
Because Matt was involved with that
Original plan.
With the original plan, and that's, they, they, I will tell you, it was hotly debated on where to put it.
I, I'm, 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 my, myself, I'm back closer to the riverfront, back by the, the amphitheater, just because if we put it those other two places, and i, if the, the developer knocks our socks off, which I, you know, who knows? I, I don't wanna have to rebuild it twice, and so it would make sense to me to put it closer to the riverfront in that little triangle spot.
Similar to this.
Right, like that. That's what I would do.
So we have the ability to put any shade down there?
Yes, we do. We, the other thing is, this isn't a question. I assume, because that question, this question got asked to me, they'd love to put shade in this area. But there was a problem with that, with operating during, um, um.
Steamboat days?
Steamboat days. Steamboat days, because of somehow they have music that goes back and forth.
There's a second stage.
Second stage. So that's why they wanted to put it off to the side. We had talked about maybe putting it down here. Let us, let us work on that. That's something I recommended to the architects, and for some reason, when engineers recommend something, it never seems like it has.
One note on that, Leo, is we do have a lot of trees in that green area now. That'll continue to get larger and provide shade.
That is true.
That is true, yeah.
But let's see what we can do, because I think, I think Smith Group would like to move that if they could.
And correct me, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but Tiger money was allocated for certain projects. We can't take that money and use that for the swimming pool.
Right, oh yeah, I was bringing that up. I was just saying that when we're thinking long-term.
But sometimes the community, I don't want the community to run on that.
So I was thinking long-term, like, what if we can't sustain a pool or build another pool, and, and the life expectancy of this pool is diminishing? What is our plan? And if we're not gonna spend money on a pool in the future, and if that's not there, then having a splash pad is a viable option, and it's part of the plan, so. Um, in, in the past, because I, I wasn't really for a splash pad, and, you know, and hearing about it and what my wife said, so, um, yeah.
Yeah, well, you, you, I agree with Linda. People need to understand it.
Let's see if we can get some of these moved.
The money has to stay here, so.
The other, the other thing I think comes up on the cost. My understanding of the Tiger is if we don't do something like the dockage that was in there pretty substantively, they're gonna take that money away. I don't think you can reprogram that money. Then, so that's something I have to be a little careful about too. Even though if the, if you don't get the other grant, you'd have to come up with one-point-five million. But we still had one-point-five million in Tiger to pay for part of that, so that's, that's another issue.
Something else to consider is I'd like to see the, the, um, splash pad in close proximity to the restroom. I'm thinking of young moms and babies in strollers. They need a diaper changing. We just need to make everything as, as convenient for them as we can.
Yeah, you would have restroom in the auditorium when it's open.
But we don't want them wandering there necessarily.
Yeah, right, right now, the ba, the bathroom would be here. Which isn't too bad, but it's not right next to it. I, I, I hear what you're saying. Um, the other thing, this went the wrong way. I, I just wanted to guess some agreement that we could, because I think the people that currently run the, the auditorium are not gonna be happy when we move this thing, cut this thing back. The road's gonna come through here, and we're gonna cut that thing back, and we'll make it look good. But I don't know of, uh.
You mean cut the canopy back?
About, uh, would they, they wouldn't be a
I don't think the canopy would matter.
I don't think they would care about that.
Okay.
I mean, because it would give it, well, give them easier to big, bring big trucks in there when they
Well, that's what we were saying, that's what they're thinking.
Yeah, I don't think that'd be a problem at all.
Not very attractive right now.
Remove those concrete median dividers.
What about, what about remove, the other thought, I didn't think anybody would go for it, removing it completely. We thought about that too.
I'm for that, but I imagine they use it when there's inclement weather.
They, they told me they use it for especially like, uh, handicap type people.
That is a handicap.
I think we should leave it for that, so we'll make it, we'll make it, we did this with the port building, you remember, they had that, and we cut that off, and I think that looked pretty good, so we'll do the same thing.
Okay.
That, and that's in the cost estimate already to do that. We looked at maybe even putting a new one on, but it just, it, the, the prices got crazy.
Okay.
All right?
And so this parking lot's gonna be elevated a foot?
This, not this one, the, the north parking lot.
Okay, the north one.
And, and right now, it's actually almost elevated that foot on the, um, west side. And so we'd be just kinda bringing that elevation and, and dipping it down.
The, the reason why I want the parking lot raised a foot, um, I didn't really say that specifically. I just told you to get the wall, so I don't have to. It's for operations of the flood wall barriers, uh, currently, to make the wrap with the HESCO barriers around the permanent wall. Uh, were activated at about sixteen-five, um, otherwise that corner is underwater. So I'm hoping we can kind of reduce the amount of times and kind of the cost for, uh, put, deploying flood measures, so.
So, so then you're gonna have a, a half wall except during, in these, in these drive paths? So at eighteen feet, instead of sixteen-five, a foot and a half's a lot, then he'd have to start putting in his, his, um, his, his stop logs.
Then one other question I had is, it was just, uh, something I didn't know. What was the railroad thing about the difference between a swing bar and a
Yeah, amazingly.
I didn't know what that was. What is it?
One of our structure, they currently have up, if you go upriver, they have a swing gate. It's a big gate, and it swings closed for, for the railroad. Those are really expensive gates. So what we told them we'd like to do, and we've done it many times, is put a stop log gate in. And if we raised it, so the sill's at twenty-one feet, now he's at eighteen and a half. Twenty-one, they've decided they can't, if the water gets to twenty-one, they're not running. They won't have to put their gate in now till twenty-one. Then they're saying, hey, that's fine. Now you can put a stop log structure similar to what you have now.
It's, it's for ease of operation for both parties, um. This lo, most recent flood was difficult, uh, to, to have the party, both parties come to, uh, the, you know, the same conclusion on what happened with flood operations. So getting them to the same height as the north bottoms levy district would be optimal to have that work.
So the idea is they can run up to the very last second, then we put that, those stop logs in, and then they're done running, and then as soon as the water comes down, they can remove the stop logs.
Okay.
Right now, he does it with sand fill and HESCO barriers, and they're really hard to take up and down. So this will be a, a solid way of doing it that will be guaranteed.
Cool.
Okay.
All right.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you for allowing me to have all the time. Appreciate it. There was a lot of stuff to go through.
There is.
We appreciate you.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, next on the discussion items was parking passes. I think this had to do, who was, who's tackling that? This had to do with the senior center?
Yeah, this is basically the same memo that was back in November, so, um, I guess for the new council members, there's, there's been parking passes. There's never been a resolution or approval by council to authorize those. Um, the parking committee recommended to do away with them. That was part of the reason to make that parking lot free behind the senior center and change some of the parking times. Um, we kinda put this off based on discussion on whether they're going to the depot or not, and since that's kinda been resolved, uh, just wanted to bring that back. And if council wants to move forward with continuing to allow them, is there a process to set it up or criteria? Because we have had other individuals downtown ask, can we have a parking pass?
Yeah, we, well, in fact, when Linda and I were down to see him when they had their boat, you know, I told them that, look, we're if, if they were going to get a parking pass, it'd be assigned to the senior center, probably like five. And they would have to determine who, who would get to use them at what times, because it would be for, with that back lot being for free, uh, a lot of them, you know, raised their hand and said, well, they're willing to walk, because it's free now. But they do have some other patrons that would come in, whether they're parked in the handicaps stall or a normal stall, and typically they're parking in the handicaps stall, that need longer than two hours. So, uh, you know, we've had, had discussions. I would recommend that we do five of those uh, that are given to the seniors to decide, and they have to decide how they're administrating, but they have to be something that we would set up uh, for that.
Would we have, uh, time constraints on those passes, day constraints?
I, I think it had, the time constraint would be, uh, it wouldn't be an all-day pass. It'd be like a four-hour pass, double the time. Because that would take care of any of their activities.
And then does, does anybody know usage figures on that lot? I had, uh, some people approach me that said they're concerned that as regular employees down there, that that lot might get too full. Is that a, a problem? Is that an issue?
It hasn't been so far. There's plenty of spots in it. But, I mean, it's, it's, it's up to us. I, I think, I think part of the problem was the, uh, one of the groups has left and gone on the moose, and, and, you know, of course, it's all he said, she said. Uh, but supposedly, they were the ones that were developing their own passes. They were just printed. And now that they're gone, the, the parking issue is not as severe. However, I could see the wisdom, because they're, uh, seniors, and there's some mobility issues from time to time, where they would have a very limited number of passes that would be assigned to the center, and then they would have to determine who gets to use those. But that's, that's my thought. You know, there's five of us on council, so we have to, we can decide what, we can also decide just as, no, there's no parking passes. But the one thing we can't do is allow them to make their own parking passes, uh, and just look the other way, which is what we've been doing, so.
Another idea that someone presented to me, and initially I thought it had merit till I ran it by Nick, and that was, what if budget was no constraints, and we could pick up the seniors at their homes and bring them to the senior center? Or have them all meet at one spot, say Memorial Auditorium, and bring them in? And I, I thought that was a, a great out-of-the-box idea. Fiscally, Nick said, I don't think that's gonna work.
Burlington Urban Service can facilitate their needs by picking them up at
Dropping them off.
Dropping them off at the senior center. It will, however, require, um, bus fare or a bus pass of some sort. Um, because, because we operate that way, we can't give any conditional free, you know, we give free rides to kids. If you're wanting to do that, I have to have some sort of conditions beyond just senior center users. Um, but, you know, Burlington Urban Service is a great means for people that are not that great a transportation to get down to the senior center.
And how much is that for a pass that they were
If you buy tokens, you can get it for a dollar a ride. If you buy a monthly bus pass, it's twenty-five dollars. So you could use it every day, all day.
So depending how often they came to their card games or something for a So depending how often they came to their card games or something for a dollar to get down there, not hassle with parking, that might be worth it for them.
I would agree.
Thanks, Nick.
We're not making a decision on that today, it's something more.
Well, it's a discussion, new point, we need to, we need to give the staff a direction to go.
So if we have five passes and how many handicap?
There's four handicap stalls down there.
So that's like nine, maybe, people that are challenged.
I think there's, there's quite a few handicap spots there on that corner.
Six within the area.
But these, the passes though, understand are for extended parking, it's not to park anywhere. It's for extended, so when they're parking there, they wouldn't, they wouldn't, you know, they don't have to adhere to the two-hour limit.
I'm just adding up, because initially they'd ask for thirty, so they give them five and they've got the six handicap. Trying to get their numbers up.
Well, I would say, yeah, five would be, five's my max number, because even, even that is tough. Because we have to be fair to the other, uh, businesses down there and building owners and, and residents, so, but.
Anybody out there have any ideas? So, the, a lot of them do stay past that two hours and that's their concern.
Oh, they're all there, they might be there five hours, they serve a meal.
Yeah, they can park in the lot behind them for free all day.
Okay.
That's why we made it for free. So they can park there all day without, without a concern, in fact, I think they can park up to twenty-four hours. Uh, not that they would spend the night, but, but they can park there, uh, no problem at all.
And it's just that slight uphill grade that's bothering some of them.
Right, but there are a couple that are, that have walkers, that they go in to play cards or a concert or that type of thing, they would like to be able to park there for a, a little longer period of time. But we need to give the, the staff yes, no, or, or, um, or, or, you know, work on it, but I, it definitely can't be homegrown passes than thirty of them.
Right.
Or, or can't be ten or fifteen, that's just, there's just no way to.
How about eight, I want eight.
I'm gonna stick with five, I told them five and they were saying, well, that's what we get, what's we get, but I'm gonna stick with five.
And there's four handicap spots too, though?
There's six.
They could potentially be taken by someone else downtown, not necessarily someone in their group.
The question was too, is the senior center, only if another person works or visits downtown and is a senior, can they apply for a pass?
No, that's the, that's the sticky widget part of it, so. If we, you know. The, the, probably the right, the right thing to do as far as everybody's concerned would be not to have the parking passes at all. In fact, I still gotta get Shane's pass back. Anyway, uh, you know.
Is he a senior now?
We're trying, well, we're trying to be, we're trying to also recognize that there are some people with some mobility issues. One of the things that came up in the parking is a one-time, uh, and I don't think that's instituted yet, but at one time, you, you, you know, you get a free, free pass. Uh, and maybe that's something we look at, but we, we sure, in the meantime, need to give them an idea of what they're going to do, so they're not printing out their own parking pass and put it in their windshield thinking they're gonna be able to not get a ticket, so.
No strong ideas, we can table it and, and let you think about it for a week or two, but we need to, so put it back on the discussion for next, next work session.
What does staff recommend?
The parking committee, which is a group of staff and there's a couple downtown business individuals on there, recommended to do away with those passes, based on going to free and then we've heard from other individuals that they'd like to buy a pass for downtown and have, be able to park wherever they want downtown and not have, and.
Yeah, same.
It gets into, and then you have other businesses there, but, I mean, obviously it's a council decision. We just want to be able to have that answer if someone else asks, what do we do?
Yeah, see, that's, that's my problem with even giving the five.
And it's a two-hour parking, what if we increased to?
We just lowered it to two, yeah.
Two hour on Jefferson, three hour on the side street.
Three hour on the side streets, so they could park three hours on, on Fifth. So there's three hours on Fifth, which is where the handicap, those, one handicap stall there.
Those three now are significant.
I think, yeah, those would be three too, because they're on Fifth. So, which is better than two, and, and then they have their free parking lot in the back, so.
Well, I sure hate to be in the middle of something and then I have to watch the clock all the time and move my car and I.
Part of being downtown.
I don't like that, I don't think that makes our town, town look very friendly.
Well, the only thing I would, I would counter with that is, I was a merchant for downtown for years and we had one hour parking there for a long period of time and it's just.
Did you sell very much?
Yeah, quite honestly, and you know what, it was something we always dealt with.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that's, that's why we went to the free lots for the employees and the residents to park at.
I remember the meters when I was a kid.
Yeah, same thing.
I wanna bring the meters back so it's equitable and fair for everybody when tiger comes in, but that's another subject and another conversation.
So, do we all have a consensus on this, or, or do you want to wait until Matt gets here, we'll, we'll kick it around at the next work session?
I'm surprised he's not blowing up your phone right now.
I vote for eight, did Matt vote?
No, he hasn't, I would, I would say let's, I'm, I'm to the point right now, I'd like to work on a one more work session. Oh, Matt, no, Matt did, he said he'd be okay with eight.
Yes.
But how do you tell staff, may I ask my question, now that you're done cheering?
Well, we can, we can modify it in a year.
How do you tell, how do you tell staff that we can't tell somebody else that they can buy a parking pass that might be seventy years old and wants to park wherever they want to for four hours, how do you do that?
I would say join the senior center.
That's no guarantee, senior center's gonna say, well, we're gonna give them that to these people that need them today, but they might not get them next week, because maybe who's ever in charge at the senior center might decide that, well, Madge doesn't get one anymore, because she's not my friend, I'm gonna give it to Mindy over here.
I don't think there's any way to be fair about this.
And I think we have to gradually reduce the number, so let's say we start at eight this year, we reassess in one year and then maybe we go down to five.
I don't know how we, we can be fair about it, and then we're also putting them in charge of it themselves, um. I, I don't know how we can be fair about it, I really don't.
Matt, Matt's idea.
It's fairly unfair to take them totally away.
Matt's idea is give them six passes that can only be used with a vehicle that has a handicap sticker but can't find a handicap stall. But that still does take away the, the fact, okay, how do you, how do you, um, how do you regulate that to somebody else wanting to buy a parking pass, park wherever, maybe they're not going to the senior center.
What if if you have, I'm sorry, okay.
Maybe they're not going to the senior center, maybe they're going down to, uh, hopefully yours and they shop there every day, well, then they want to buy a pass, how do you, how do you regulate that?
What if, if you have a handicap, uh, sticker that you, you have a four-hour parking, no matter where you park?
I don't know.
Because then you're accommodating, um, people with a disability and you're giving them extra time and then it's fair across the board, can we do that?
Would the parking committee kick that option around, get back to us?
Could.
Okay.
I think the handicap parking spot, extended stay at the handicap spots is probably an easier policy to write.
Right. I, that's what I'm wondering, what do you think, chief?
I've had it come up in the past.
Thanks, Leo.
Um, when, with someone that was, uh, going, had surgery, uh, and was extending their stay in a handicap parking stall downtown and requested that, I can't approve that as the chief of police and it'd probably be like, uh, Nick said, that it would be easier for the council to make those exceptions than it would be for me, for those circumstances. Not just for the, the members of the senior center, but for, uh, other members in the community that have or want an exception to that, they could request it and apply for it and get that for a certain amount of time.
What about enforcement, if, if, if all the handicap were extended, that would make it, that would be one may, one way to differentiate that versus a normal stall.
What I can say about enforcement, uh, what works best for my parking enforcement attendant, as long as we're consistent. The, the, the consistency is what makes it, uh, better for, for her and for the parking downtown, because she hears it on the front side. Uh, every, all the, the discrepancies, I should say, she hears it from the, from the people that come downtown when she's issuing the tickets or she sees the parking passes. And those parking passes that have been there have just been ignored and, and it's a, it's a sore subject downtown and, uh, and I can, I can say that, and it's just because of the inconsistency. Law enforcement in general, if, if we're not consistent with our enforcement actions, you know, and showing favoritism from one side to the next or one person to the next, that's where law enforcement typically finds their troubles most of the time.
Well, oh, thanks, chief.
You bet.
I guess, thinking about that, so retrenching for a minute, here's where I would be and then everybody can sound off and then we can decide if we're gonna move it down or not. Um, I would be cool with an extended parking and handicap, that's a good idea, all handicap downtown. I would be fine with that, as long as they had a handicap sticker with the free lot in behind, I think that might take care of the problem and then we are out of the parking pass business. That's where I would be at, if you would, you know, that would be, I'd something I'd like at least the parking committee to weigh in on and see what they would think. Now, if anybody else has something else that they want to look at, we can do that, too. My fear on the parking passes is how do we enforce that fairly, uh, throughout the downtown? And that, you know, I know the, that, I know the seniors there, you know, hopefully they know I love them, be there soon. Uh, but how do you enforce that for, for out the downtown? Because hopefully yours, quite honestly, has a lot of senior citizen customers and so all of a sudden, if you're, are you gonna do that there as well, so, and people that work for them, that are over age. So, has anybody else got any thoughts?
Um, I, I think that the, you know, extending the, the handicap spots, uh, for the people with the, the disabilities or the handicap stickers would probably be the, the way to go and then it can be fair and you don't have to worry about parking passes and that kind of spreads it out over the downtown a little bit. Um, but I, again, I, I'm, I love the senior citizens too and I'm not trying to rain on their parade. I just think that, in the interest of fairness and, and thinking about everybody, um, I, I think that, that would probably be more of an acceptable solution.
It's, you know, I think it'd be the easiest to enforce.
You don't have to agree, though, so.
Yeah, no, no one has to agree, it's just.
I feel like, uh, we're maybe not talking the same set of real estate, because hopefully yours is not where the senior center is. It's, it's down on Jefferson quite a bit, so, I mean, you were talking about the same clientele.
Well, yeah, so, why, how's it, how's it changed?
I think they're still deserving to have some passes and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, and I love your heart for it, I'm just saying that, you, you have any thoughts?
I think doing it with the handicap stickers gives everybody a fair shake downtown, um, so I would go with that and do away with the parking passes.
Well, let's, let's, let's at least, uh, because this is a discussion item, let's at least have the parking committee look at it and then we'll come back and just discuss this again. We've waited this long, I'd rather do it right and make sure that we kind of kick some things around, that was a good idea.
And then if anybody else, again, has ideas, um, we have emails and you can feel free to contact us. I mean, we're still open to other solutions.
All right, um, so we're done with that one, is there any future discussion items that staff would like to bring forward?
Uh, creative placemaking, uh, their grant is due March second, just, and they will have to add a resolution to the regular agenda approving application to that grant. Um, that was in the budget as a city contributing ten thousand for match and then we've gotten some other match for that, but based on their timing, uh, just let us know on Friday, they're gonna be getting information this week and so we'll have a resolution on Monday in discussion at, at that time to apply for that.
And when was that due, Eric?
March second.
March second, thank you.
Anybody have any questions on the creative placemaking?
Somebody someday was gonna tell me more about it.
Okay. Uh, my only concern on that is I don't want to double, double tap the work we've already done. Um, anything else for future discussion?
Uh, we've got a couple of announcements.
Okay, okay, do your announcements and I'll go through council.
You have a, you have two competing breakfast invitations for this weekend. Um, Pastor, uh, Starling, uh, has invited you, uh, from seven to ten, uh, this Saturday, it's February fifteenth. Uh, where do we go from here is the theme of the title, uh, talk about younger and older people seeking employment who are incarcerated and also seeking employment, so, um, if you'd like to join him at the faith temple, he's invited you all. And then there is the Eggs and Issues on Saturday, February fifteenth. This one starts at seven fifteen AM, um, and it is at the Greater Burlington Partnership. Um, breakfast costs five dollars and if you'd like to go, please RSVP.
Yeah, need to RSVP. Okay.
Uh, I do know that Friends of Cascade released the results and findings of their, their bridge study. Uh, I was wondering if anybody knew when they were sharing that with us?
Got it right here.
What?
It's in your mailbox.
We'll go down and copy, it's in, it's in your mailbox.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, and then also we have Citizens Academy coming up and starting when, Eric?
Uh, the twentieth.
The twentieth, and we have Sarah Moke in the, in the audience here and she's gonna be part of that, I'm pretty excited to have her be part of this. Um, I know that, uh, is it Tanisha was also on the list. Um, so, I know that we're gonna have a good group this year and I'm excited to see, uh, what kind of ideas they have. I don't think I had anything else.
Linda?
Um, Great Opportunity is coming up this weekend, February fifteenth, the Russian Ballet will be in town at Memorial Auditorium. So, I know you always have seen the movies where you think, oh, that won't hold my interest, but I am positive it will hold your interest and you will love it and you'll be thrilled that you went. So the Russian Ballet Memorial Auditorium this Sunday, February fifteenth, and then my, um, heart goes out to. I think the fifteenth on my notes, so.
Well, he just told us Saturday, the fifteenth for the thing, I'm just doing math here, let's look at the calendar.
You're right, the fifteenth is Saturday, because Valentine's Day is the fourteenth, which is Friday, so happy Valentine's Day, everybody. And, um, my heart goes out to everyone that's got sick kids at home or they're ill, because it's really pretty rampant through our community right now. So, sorry, Matt, I hope, uh, everybody heals up real quick, my family too, I've got three of them home today.
I'm gonna take a seat, please.
Uh, Mel, you got anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I don't have anything, so unless there's anything beyond the Linda's Snickers, uh, we're, we're adjourned.